I'd like to call the City of Saloon Springs Board of Adjustments virtual meeting for Tuesday, May 12th to order at this time. Roll call, Mr. Phillips.
Song.
Here.
Montgomery. Sally.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Driscoll.
Here.
Calvin.
Here.
Okay, with the board present, the next item on the agenda will be approval of the minutes for the regular meeting, January 14th, 2020. You've all received in advance. Do I have any corrections, additions, or deletions needed?
I make a motion.
Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, sign by voice vote.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same.
Okay, with that, the first item on the agenda will be a variance request for a signed variance, P O A twenty dash oh one, at twenty-three ninety-six East Talalawal. Mr. Rhodes?
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board. I'm Ben Rhodes, Senior Planner. Before you is a signed variance request occurring at twenty-three sixty-nine East Talalawal Street. The request is to allow for a second freestanding sign on a single lot with two businesses. Here you see the site plan on the right side of the screen. On the left side, you see the approximate location and design of the proposed freestanding sign for lightning bolt advertising. This is copied from the applicant's statement of hardship, which, as you know, is the prime evidence used to buy the Board of Adjustment to determine if a hardship exists with a proposed sign that causes certain practical difficulties when applying the sign code. The applicant argues that the main issue with the current setup is that the site legibility, customers are confused as to which building is for which use, whether that was being for the sign business or the recording studio, the other business which is on the same lot. The applicant goes on to argue that the approved sign, excuse me, if this sign permit is approved, it will complement other signs in the area. And finally, you're looking at the site. This is facing to the south. City reviewed the request, and while we believe the new sign will complement the area aesthetically, we believe the application fails to demonstrate a practical difficulty. The applicant has ample space to add a wall sign to the business for identification. If that option is not preferable, he could construct a joint identification sign to allow for a sound recording studio and the sign company to be identified in one sign structure, such as what you would see for a shopping center. Finally, failing those two options, he could just apply for a lot split, split the commercial lot into two, thus allowing a freestanding sign on each lot. These are, we found out that there is ample space for each business if it was, if the property was split. Staff concludes by not finding a hardship in this case. If the Board chooses to grant the variance, staff recommends a condition that the applicant be required to construct monument signs as presented with the application. We are available for any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone on behalf, or does the applicant wish to make a comment to the Board of Adjustment? Please raise your hand in the Zoom or press star nine if you're in by phone. There seems to be none from the applicant, so if anyone from the public wishes to comment on this proposal, again, raise your hand on the Zoom app or press star nine. None being seen. Does anyone from the Commission have questions or comments?
I have a question.
Mr. Smith.
Okay, you know, I may not understand all I know about this, but I drove past the business in question from west to east and from east to west. Going from west to east, as I approached the business, I didn't realize it was there until I became right up on the building. Then I saw the signs for lightning bolt on their building. And as I went further, I didn't see the signs that was for the recording studio until I was right even with it. The sign runs parallel to the streets. I went on up, made a U-turn in the high school parking lot, and came back. As I approached the business from the east going towards the west, I could see the, the painting on the side of the recording studio well before I got there, but once again, I couldn't see the side until I got there. However, approaching the business, I could see lightning bolts advertising signs on their building. As I saw the foundation that they had poured for their, for their new sign, it was paralyzed, parallel to the, to the road. These are the only signs, and maybe I'm not that observant, but when I go down the highways, all the billboards, all the signs are perpendicular to the street. And if you're going to put a sign parallel, it's not going to give you any more, any more business. And my question is to Ben, is there anything in our, in our rules that says a sign can, has to be perpendicular or parallel or what have you? As I approached from the west going east, I could see a billet tree right next to it. But anyway, that's my question.
That's a good question. I will answer it first, and if Brian, who administers the sign code, has further comment, he may jump in as well. But my understanding is there's no actual regulation to say how the sign is oriented. I would agree that about ninety-eight to ninety-nine percent of the signs in Saloon Springs are perpendicular with the idea of catching the traffic as you travel down the road, that you would see that sign facing towards you as motorists and not facing towards the business. There is, I think, only one other business I know in town that does it the other way, where it faces out front. There may be others I'm not aware of, but there, there isn't anything that says, states exactly how the sign has to be oriented on the site in terms of whether it's perpendicular or parallel. Brian, do you have anything else?
You're, you're correct. There's nothing that states how the sign should be oriented.
Okay.
Anyone else from the Commission have any questions or comments?
To follow up with that, if I could, please.
Yes, sir.
If approval is given for, for the business to place the sign, like they have proposed, being a past business owner, I don't see whether it's, where it's going to give him any more visibility other than what he already has on the building. I guess that's enough.
My question, I do have a question, if I may.
Go ahead.
With the recording studio having their sign out front, is, is that the reason why we can't have two signs because it's on one property?
That's correct.
Okay.
Right.
That was going to be my comment, is the lot split would take care of this, basically, if they just would do the lot split. Is that correct?
That is correct. That's one of the three options.
Yeah, I, I support that.
Anyone else from the Commission have questions or comments? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
I make, I make a motion based on the staff's presentation that the hardship presented by the applicant, staff does not recommend approval, so I make a motion that we disapprove.
I have a motion to disapprove. Do I have a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Williams, I always like to confirm on these to make sure that we vote the way that, that we intend to. So the motion and the second is to deny a yea vote, a yes vote is to deny?
A yes, a yes vote would be to, yes, you're correct, a yes vote is to deny the variance. A no vote would be to approve the variance.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Phillips, roll call.
Sally.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Driscoll.
Yes.
Calvin.
Yes.
Song.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. The variance has been denied. This being the only item on the agenda, do I have a motion to adjourn the Board of Adjustments?
So moved.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Board of Adjustments, is it your? Mr. Phillips, you ready to switch? Ben, you ready?
Yep.
All right. Call the City of Saloon Springs, Mission Lake Commission, virtual meeting, Tuesday, May 12th, 2020, to order. First item will be roll call. Mr. Phillips?
Sally.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
Smith.
Present.
Driscoll.
Here.
Calvin.
Here.
Song.
Here.
Next item on the agenda will be approval of the minutes for the meeting on March 10th, 2020. Do we have any additions, deletions, corrections needed? As you have received copies in advance of the minutes? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Make a motion. Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Minutes are approved. First item on our development, permanent approvals will be preliminary plat development permit, P B twenty dash oh one, fourteen eight hundred through fourteen nine hundred block of Lawless Road. Mr. Rhodes?
Okay, I believe everyone should see my screen, hopefully. All right, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Planning Commission, for your first development review to item today's agenda. You're looking at a plenary plat occurring at the fourteen eight hundred to nine hundred block of Lawless Road. This is just west of the Lawless Ranch duplex addition. Their proposal is to plot out seventy-nine single-family lots in two phases. The first phase is planned in the future, but is not actually part of this proposal. Here you see the proposal. The southern half of the forty acres parcel is proposed for the lots, with the northern half left undeveloped at this time. There are two detention basins seen outlined in the pink color. The proposal develops this in two phases. Phase one, at the far southern end, will contain larger lots appropriate for the R one zone district. Smaller lots are shown above. The idea is to match with the existing houses, housing density along Lawless Road, but then increase that density to the north to better tie in with the Lawless Ranch two-family duplex development, which is now presently finished. Now, the proposal is not annexed in the city. However, staff suggests a condition that the annexation occur prior to construction on the property. Because the annexation and the zoning are under consideration, I'm displaying the future land use map. As you can see, this area is designated as low-density residential. So technically, the proposal meets this class because only seventy-nine lots are proposed on forty acres, which meets the two units per acre designation. However, it can be assumed that additional development will occur with the potential third phase on the northern half of the property. Staff is supportive of increasing the density beyond the future land use maps guidance due to several factors. These are the availability of high-capacity sewer lines in the area, improved streets, and the growth trends heading north of the city, as we've seen evidence in other developments. Staff will recommend that the density be increased for this parcel when, whenever the future land use map is updated. Here you see the site. This is looking to the north. The picture was taken a few months ago because the project undergone some delays due to various issues. That's why it still looks wintry out there on that picture. The two-family structures to the right are more or less finished at this point. Staff recommends approval with the condition as shown on the staff report on the annexation and the zoning to R one and R two. With that, we are available for any questions, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Is there someone on behalf of the applicant that would like to address the Commission? Please raise your hand on the Zoom app or star nine.
I got it.
Mr. Holmeyer.
Yes, sir. Just wanted to follow up on that annexation. The application has been submitted to the county, and the hearing date has been set for later this month, so we don't anticipate that to be an issue. I'm available to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you, sir. Figuring out the technology, bear with me a moment here. Has anyone from the public wish to comment on this project or address the Commission? Please raise your hand on the Zoom app or dial star nine on your telephone. Okay, it appears to be none. Does anyone from the Commission have questions or comments on this project? Seems to be none. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve P P twenty dash one, subject to the following condition. The applicant shall annex the subject property in the City of Saloon Springs and request to apply the R one zone for the proposed lots running on Lawless Road and R two zone for the proposed lots interior to the project prior to construction of the property.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Mr. Phillips?
Song.
Yes.
Sally.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Driscoll.
Yes.
Calvin.
Yes.
Motion carries to approve, and this will go to the Board of Directors on June 2nd, 2020. Next item on the agenda is a rezoning development permit, R Z twenty dash zero three, to rezone from C two to R two, the nine hundred block of South Washington Street. Mr. Rhodes?
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Chairman. So I will be, and Commission, thank you. I will be presenting the next two items on your agenda together as they're related and occurring on the same property. What you're looking at is a rezoning request and a plenary plat at the nine hundred block of South Washington Street. The request rezones the area, you see shaded there under red, from C two commercial to R two residential. The rezoning encompasses one point seven six acres, while the whole project is for two point eight four acres. Here you see the site for the plenary plat, which includes a portion of the property that's already zoned. You see north of the area there, I'll draw that out here. Sorry. Let me draw on that. So that you could see that area is included as well. So here you see the proposed site plan. The concept is a short cul-de-sac with nine lots that will access off of it. The back lot here, I can get this to agree with me. The back lot, but there that I just circled, will make use of a drive access that will come straight into the cul-de-sac. And this lot also butts the KCS rail line. Here you see the future land use map. You see that this whole area is designated with a purple shading, which is intended for industrial use. The idea being is that the industrial users in this area will desire sites that have direct access to the rail. There are a finite number of undeveloped lots available with the direct rail access. Here you see the property looking to the north. Note, there are several things here. First, the drainage channel that cuts through the property. Secondly, the larger homes abutting to the south and north. And finally, the presence of an auto business, which is considered an intensive commercial due to the auto body services provided with that business. I've switched directions on you. This is another site view, looking now to the east. As you can see, we wanted to refoto the site after a two-inch rain event, which is becoming more and more common these days. The site is pretty much flooded out. The proposal channelizes this water runoff to the rear yards of each lot through a designated drainage easement. While this technically will work in terms of stormwater engineering, staff has concerns about the viability of the long-range maintenance of this easement, in addition of fencing or other materials that might end up washing downstream or worse, cause a damming effect due to high precipitation event. It is much easier to handle drainage manual, management, when there's one property rather than subdividing it of nine individual lots with potentially nine different property owners. Staff would like to conclude that we're not recommending in favor of either the rezoning or the plenary plat due to the land use conflicts with the auto business, the neighborhood context of larger homes in the area which are inconsistent with the proposed lots in the subdivision, and the need to preserve access to the KCS rail line, and the issues of the drainage flow, and of course, the inconsistency with the future land use map. Staff is available for any questions initially on the rezoning. Then, following the rezone vote, we can answer questions specifically on the plenary plat. Please note the recommended conditions on the plenary plat staff report should the Commission recommend in favor of this application. This morning, staff did receive a letter from the applicant, but I do believe that the agent, Mr. Ron Holmeyer, is available right now for this meeting to read those comments into the record during the public comment period. And with that, we are available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ben. Anyone from the, on behalf of the applicant, wish to address the Commission?
Ron Holmeyer does.
So it looks like we've got the applicant and the engineer.
So I've, I've unmuted him, so he should be.
Okay, Mr. Holmeyer, you do have the floor. Go ahead, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. And Mr. Chavez, as a letter, they, to address a lot of the comments and concerns that staff had pointed out, you know, the, the roadway commercial, this R two only affects a lot that does not have rail access. As Mr. Rhodes pointed out, the property to the south is residential, the property north of this is residential, and as you continue north, there's more residential that backs up to the railroad. Or single-family, one house that was recently built in 2017, just a couple of doors north of here. Not sure, I mean, I understand it's own residential, and so therefore, they had a right to build a new house on that, but if the long-range plan was for industrial for that entire run of the east side of Washington Street, I wonder why new houses were being built in that area if that doesn't fit the long-range plan. The current land use map design makes this as future industrial, even though the previous version of the land use map did not, ninety-six to 2020 version. In order, and also, the strip of land that is currently C, or resident, R two, is north of this C two property, is not wide enough for a rail spur to come off and onto this property. So you would have to, someone would have to buy not only this property, but the houses north of there to get enough frontage on the railroad to be able to actually bring a spur onto this property, which I'm assuming is the whole purpose of trying to preserve industrial next to the railroad tracks. Yes, appreciated the photo of the drainage because that showed that there's not as much water as I thought there was going through there, so it's going to be easily managed with ditch improvements. Developer will, if this is approved, will build a privacy fence along the ditch line. if this is approved, will build a privacy fence along the ditch line, not across the ditch or anything like that. And so by building the fence with the house, there would be no future likelihood of someone trying to fence across it or put something down in the bottom of the ditch, drainage ditch. That would preserve the drainage easement, drainage ditch. Don't remember. I mean, yes, the access to the lot five would be designed so that it, I might have been covering the camera there, sorry. But it would meet the drainage manuals requirements for a driveway and make sure there was no drainage or flooding that it would cause upstream of that. I'm a little puzzled finally about the future land use of industrial for this heavily residential area. I mean, outside of the body shop, north of Kenwood and east of Washington Street is all residential. So I'm not sure why that, that area, unless someone is anticipating a future redevelopment of the area. But then you've got industrial right across the street from residential again. And there is, appears to be some redevelopment on the west side of Washington Street as well because I noticed one of, one or two of those structures are either recently remodeled or being remodeled. Question the validity of commercial and industrial jumping across Kenwood and continuing along on the north side of that. Mr. Chavez had an additional comment, if I can find the right email here. He said he would like to say that he appreciates. I'm sorry. Like to express appreciation to the staff. He would consider these points and may change your recommendation for planning commission meeting, which obviously was too late for them to do that. His intention and his desire is to keep creating valuable assets for the city. Also, he personally considers that the pre-application meeting has the purpose of overseeing all obstacles in planning the city desires and to the benefit of city of Salons Springs people. He scheduled the pre-application meeting before closing on the property. And the reasons were the recommendation of declining, the resounding plenary plat never came to his attention at that meeting. If he would have known on the pre, at the pre-application meeting of these concerns staff had, he would never have purchased the property. So if his residential proposal declined, he definitely has no other choice. He would have to pursue putting in some type of industrial or commercial building project on this property, which he is sure would be less acceptable to the neighbors. And there could be more challenges to overcome. And that's all I got at this point. I'd answer any question.
Thank you. Okay. Looks like from the public, we have Mr. Sizemore that would like to speak and address the commission. Please remember, at this point, we're speaking on the zoning topic and not the, not the preliminary plat. Give me a moment.
I got it.
Okay, Mr. Sizemore, you have three minutes to address the board or commission.
Can he state his address?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Name and address.
My name is Gary Sizemore. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the address is eight thirty South Washington Street, which is just to the west and north of the property. And as far as the rezoning, I, I don't have a lot to say about that except I am in favor of keeping it with the long-term development plans. But I would like to officially speak to the, the development of the plat, I suppose. So that's, that's my primary issue is the development of the housing of the subdivision.
Okay. Mr. Sizemore, I want to clarify your comments. You, you wish to see that it stays residential or that it goes to the plan of industrial?
I honestly, I prefer that it stays with the long term, that it, the zoning as commercial, I suppose, because I do not, I am not in favor of putting a subdivision on that small property. So I'm in favor of, of it being commercial. That's fine with me.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure that we understood what you were speaking to.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to address the commission? Please raise your hand on the Zoom app or dial star nine on your phone. There appearing to be none, I'll call for an end of the public comment period on the rezone. Does anyone from the commission have any questions or comments on the rezone? Could someone from staff speak to Mr. Chavez's point about the preliminary meeting? And just his being aware of issues? Or that may be just a roll of the dice for any developer. You could probably provide some clarification there.
Yeah, I can, I can answer that, Commissioner McKinney. When we do these preliminary meetings, we have limited information. We basically get the, the basic concept of the application. And we, I know, do recall sharing the future land use map at that time in the meeting. We pulled that up on the computer in the room. So the applicant was aware that this was not the, the plan for that area. We didn't state our recommendation at that time because we were still considering our, the, the application. You know, we go through a, a internal process here at the city. That takes several weeks. Once the application is turned in to get the full temperature of a project as far as, you know, whether it will work or not and where we really feel on, on the recommendation. It's not my recommendation. It's, I have a part in it, yes, but it is the full staff's recommendation. And the full staff does not necessarily attend these preliminary meetings. So it's impossible for us to provide a recommendation at a pre-app conference. That's basically what I have, but I'd be happy to yield the floor to any of the other staff who want to add, add to that.
Okay. Apparently to be no others. We have any other questions or comments from the commission regarding the rezone? Seemingly to have none. Do we have a motion from the commission regarding this rezone? I will ask again if we have a motion from the commission regarding the rezone.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we deny the resuming development permit, RZ twenty dash zero three.
I have a motion. Do we have a second? I'll ask a second time if we have a second to Commissioner Song's motion in order for us to provide recommendation to the Board of Directors. There being none. The proposal, the request ties at the commission level without action. And we'll go to the Board of Directors on June second, twenty twenty. Is that correct, Mr. Williams?
You are correct. Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Williams, please, please let me know. Do we hear the preliminary plat? And there's a stipulation to any vote? Or how do we handle the preliminary plat in this place?
Well, you, I mean, you can certainly consider it, I mean, you can talk about it, but you can't make a recommendation to approve it unless you also recommend the, the rezone. So, I mean, it's, it's basically moot at this point, I would say.
Okay.
Point of clarification. We, we did receive a, a written letter from Mr. Chavez that has not been furnished yet to the commission. Am I permitted to?
Yes, you are.
Read this aloud to the commission?
Please do.
Okay. Okay. The reason we're doing this is so that it can be forwarded to the Board of Directors because otherwise, we'd be sending something to the board that the commission did not receive. And so we have to enter it into the record for, to, to proceed forward to the board. So the letter is dated May fifth, twenty twenty. Again, this was received today. City asylum springs, P O box eighty, asylum springs, Arkansas, seven two seven six one. To the asylum springs planning commission and board of directors. The request to rezone lot one of the Potte minor subdivision as recorded as document L two zero one nine two two eight two seven in the Benton County Circuit Court and Recorders records from C two roadway commercial to R two medium is a good fit for the existing uses in the vicinity of the property. The lot south of the property on the corner of Washington Street and Kenwood Street is single-family residential. Although the lot north of lot one of the said Potte minor subdivision is vacant, the next five lots to the north are all single-family residential. In addition, all the lots on the west side of Washington Street are single-family residential. The one, the only side of the property that isn't single-family residential is the property east between the said lot one and the railroad tracks, which is also C two commercial and is occupied by the automotive body shop. The future, the current future land use map designates this property as future industrial, even though the previous version nineteen ninety-six to twenty twenty of the future land use map recommends this property as medium density residential. Therefore, the current future land use map will acquire the area along the west side of the railroad tracks to be converted from its existing residential use to industrial uses. If this is the case, then the city shouldn't have allowed recent residential construction on some of the lots north of the site that are adjacent to the railroad tracks. Also, this seems like overkill if the proposed industrial, when there are hundreds of acres of future industrial north of Sherry Whitlock Drive that are currently vacant. As far as the drainage issues on the property, that is correct. The land is low and flat, so it floods in a wide path in its current state. However, additional fill will, fill like what was done for the adjacent automotive body shop on lot two of the said Potte minor subdivision will correct this problem. Of course, a new drainage ditch will be acquired and is proposed. The development proposes to construct a privacy fence between the new houses and the proposed drainage ditch so that there will not be any fences, storage buildings, playsets, or any other structures on the proposed lots that will impede the drainage flow. The flagpole extension for the proposed lot five will be thirty feet wide with a twenty-foot-wide asphalt concrete drive, which is more than adequate to accommodate fire apparatus. Also, the drive will cross the drainage by way of a culvert that was sized per the city's drainage manual, which will eliminate any drainage issues or impede the drainage flow. On the final issue related to the proposed future industrial land use, if the city intends to apply the current future land use map recommendation for this area, then I have to seriously consider our request to change this property to industrial zoning, which would be open this predominantly residential area to the potential all uses permitted in industrial zone properties, including adult businesses, use units twenty-two, and sex-oriented businesses, use unit twenty-three. Thank you for your consideration, Javier Chavez, Chavez Management LLC. That concludes the letter.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. I think that was important, and I do want to speak to the commission since we've not actually moved from either one of these topics. We have to remember our scope, and yes, this still goes to the Board of Directors. However, they don't, they, they don't provide the same role that we are supposed to provide. And when we don't have a motion either way, yea or nay, we kind of put them in a spot and even more so the developer. Typically, if we're going to vote something down, we provide our, our reasoning. And it gives them direction, gives them guidance as opposed to just leaving a piece of property or a project or developer in limbo. They, they have something to work on to know that they need to correct, change, or rethink. So with that being said, I'll wait a moment to see if anyone wishes to discuss anymore before we move on with sending two topics to the Board of Directors with no recommendations.
I've got a question for the, for Jay, Jay, if I could, please.
Go ahead, sir.
Can this rezone, RZ twenty dash three be brought back before the commissioner, although we had no action taken on it? Can you come back and ask for another motion on it? Or even a second to the motion that was there?
We did not have a second.
Right, it died for lack of a second, I understand now. How can we bring it back up?
Mr. Williams?
You put me on a spot because, I mean, this is unusual situation. But my, my thought, I'll stop my head is that given that there's been no action taken, that if, if someone wants to go ahead and you know, make a, you know, make, make another motion and it gets another motion in a second and that the board could still, could still act because there, there has, has not actually been. I mean, we haven't moved on to another item and there has been no official action taken. So, you know, my, my, my thought, I mean, just is that, you know, the board, if, if the, if the commission wants to choose to act on this item, it's, it still has the option of doing that.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Mr. Smith, it looks like we have someone from the public that would like to address us. If, if we can pause your thought for a moment and hear what they have to say. One moment. Mr. Sisum, um, if you're there, please state your name and address for the record and address the commission.
My name is Gary Sisum. I live at eight thirty South Washington Street in Silent Springs. And I am speaking uh, to the, to the fact of the drainage. I contend that the reason there hasn't been any building of residence put there is because it's unsuitable. And um, I've, my wife and I have lived here for, at this residence for 28 years and I have seen that property over time. You know, in that watershed and the volume of water that comes down here. And in fact, probably, I don't know certain the date, but 20 years ago or so, the city of Silent Springs bought the property just west of us and just across the street west of the subdivision location to install a detention pond in order to curb the flow that is coming down from that watershed and going down to Sager Creek. And that is just west of my house. It joins my property to the west. And at times we have seen that water level even in the pond going above the four culverts that go underneath Maxwell Street to our west. And it actually would flow like a river. So my problem is the amount of filter that it would be necessary to put in houses there is only going to make the batter worse and it's going to dump the water to the adjacent area. And it's going to, it's going to be more of a a dilemma with that than it is because anytime you elevate that property, put in streets and driveways, then the runoff is even more. And I've submitted some pictures and I've got
Yes.
Uh, pictures of the lot when after rain just taken six weeks ago.
I, I have them up if you want me to go through them.
Sure, please.
Okay.
This particular picture, of course, is from Washington Street looking to the east. And as I said, these pictures were taken in March of this year, so it is current and both of these are just showing the same. This is the natural drainage area of the property and you can see water running down through there. And I think the aerial view displayed this as well too. And this is from Pinewood Street looking north and this is after the water subsided. And you can still see how much water is standing in the field and how much fill is going to be necessary to make that viable. And, uh, there is full flow coming from the rain and that, that covers almost the whole side of that one property adjacent to Pinewood Street.
Uh, excuse me, we're, we're over three minutes if you can wrap it up a little bit, please.
Okay, if you'll show this, this is looking directly south toward the bypass, the overpass. This is across the street from the property. So I just wanted to make sure that you could appreciate the volume of water that comes down through here and the amount of fill it would take and the dumping the water on other property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Dan, I have a question if that's okay.
Yes, sir.
So is there adequate room there for rail access? I think Mr. Homeyer said he thought there was not unless other property was acquired there.
Yeah, um, to be honest, we did not really look into the logistics of a rail spur. We're just saying that, uh, yeah, this is one of the few locations in this part of town that has access, direct access to the rail. You know, whether they would need to acquire some additional property or right of way to make that work logistically, I, I can't speak to that. Um, but, uh, you know, it, it is, does have a, a front see the rail right, right away. So.
Good, thanks.
Dan?
Yes.
Can you move your mic in a little more? Get you move your mic in a little bit more, breaking up a little bit.
Okay, well, it's just on.
Anything else from commissioners?
Just from my information, how frequently do we revise that future use map? I mean, is that the word? I mean, that thing's fluid to some degree, isn't it?
Uh, well, we were planning on doing a revision this year, um, although that might be put back slightly due to the COVID situation. Uh, but, uh, there was going to be a, a major update to our, uh, city's master plan, which would have included this map.
I mean, I think I see both sides here and you know, I, this is a tough one, but, uh, you know, maybe, maybe a lesser number of lots that, you know, I don't, of course, that's the next one, but the rezone, I'm I don't know.
Okay, it looks like we have another public comment. User ending six zero one, please state your name and address and you'll have three minutes to address the commission.
Oh, it's Steve Hill House. I live at eight thirty six South Washington. My statement is, uh, just to point out a rule of parliamentary order. Uh, once a motion has died for lack of a second, it cannot be revisited during the same meeting like you all are doing currently.
Okay, uh, we'll refer that to our attorney. Thank you, sir.
I believe, I, I believe that is, I believe it's under chapter 10, but I'm not going to swear to that. It can be revisited at a subsequent meeting later, the next stated meeting or, or however you want to do it, but it cannot be revisited, therefore it can't be discussed to any purpose.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Let me, let me see if I can, like I said, I'm kind of coming, uh, you know, um, you know, out of blue on that one. So I'll have to see if I can, I can find something for you on that one. Um, but like I said, I don't know off the top of my head for sure. But I'll see what I can find.
Okay. One moment here while I, uh, collect my thoughts on where we go from here. Well, I believe that, um, we discussed the preliminary plat concerns as well during that time period. And there doesn't seem to be an action in either one. And as this still goes to the board of directors, I believe that, uh, we should just move on with the agenda. So with that being said, next item on the agenda is preliminary plat development permit PP twenty dash oh three. One four seven zero one North Country Club Road. Mr. Rhodes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. Can everyone hear me okay? I know I've been having some mic issues, so. Um, before you is a, another preliminary plat occurring at, uh, uh, in the county, this is at, uh, one four seven oh one North Country Club Road. This is just north of the, uh, electric substation and across from the, uh, street from Web Wheel. Uh, the proposal is to develop a seventy three, single family lots, twenty, twenty six, two family lots and two, two, two multifamily lots. In addition, the applicant is proposing a park facility, which will include several active recreation amenities. Uh, because this, uh, development is presently outside of city limits, the applicant proposes to annex the property with the R two, R four and PK zones. Uh, this is the site plan. Um, some notable features include, uh, the detention basin shown in pink outline and, uh, two existing ponds shown in blue, um, that will be mucked out and filled with, with the stormwater directed to the, uh, basins. The, uh, large lots, um, are on the southern end of the property are multifamily and are, uh, parkland. This is intentionally based at this location so that the more intensive land uses are abutting non-residential areas, i.e. the, uh, U two D still, uh, substation and the, um, and issues to the east. Uh, the multifamily is shown to include, uh, apartments and townhomes. The applicant is dedicating right of way on the southern property line for the future extension of Oak Crest Road. The, uh, development will tie into the extension and will be built, uh, approximately a hundred and six feet of the northern half of the road to access the property. Eventually, the, uh, southern half will be built for a full, um, arterial street width. The width, uh, built, uh, proposed is suitable to anticipated traffic, uh, entering and exiting the addition. Finally, uh, staff may, uh, recommending, maybe recommending that street trees be planted along the, um, straightaway street leading, um, up to the park. And that's intentional to, uh, slow traffic down. I'll show that this, this street right here. Okay. Um, that, and just going back, that, that, that condition would come on the final plat, not the preliminary plat review. So, uh, this is the, uh, future land use map, uh, because this site is including annexation and future zoning on displaying the, the land use map at this time. Uh, the designated, uh, mixed use, uh, has been shown here to be appropriate for, uh, residential and commercial development. Uh, the map is also, uh, showing that a portion of the property contain a park. That's what this is there in the middle. Uh, and as stated, one park will be provided as part of the subdivision proposal. Uh, I don't normally show this, but because, uh, there's several zones included, we're going to include a zoning plan. Uh, and this basically just details, uh, where on the property, the R two zones going, the R four, and then the PK in the corner there in the blue. And then finally, this is the site, uh, looking to the north. Uh, you'll note that identical land uses exist to the northeast of the property that's located right here, just in the distance. Um, that is for the Nottingham addition that contains, uh, multifamily and two family housing. Staff is recommending approval with the condition that the annexation and the zoning occur prior to the final plat acceptance. Staff standbys for any questions. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Is anyone on behalf of the applicant wish to address the commission? Please raise your hand in the Zoom app or dial star nine on your phone. Mr. Homeyer.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for the input on this and just available for any questions.
Thank you, sir. Anyone from the public wish to address the commission on, in regards to this project on Country Club Road? Please raise your hand in the Zoom app or dial star nine on your phone. There seeming to be none, we'll close up the comment period. Anyone from the commission have comments or questions regarding this proposal? Seeming to be none, do we have a motion in regards to preliminary plat twenty dash zero three?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, PP twenty zero three, uh, subject to staff's recommended conditions that the applicant annexes, uh, the property into the city. And changes the zoning, I'm on the right one there, right? To R two four PK.
Yes.
On the preliminary plat prior to the final plat, uh, city acceptance.
Motion, do I have a second? Second. Motion and second. Mr. Rhodes.
Sally?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Calvin?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Motion's approved. This will go to the board of directors on June 2nd, 2020. Next item on the agenda is final development permit. Final plat development permit, FP twenty dash zero three, three thousand block of Sherry Whitlock Drive. Mr. Rhodes.
As I said, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. Uh, for your next review item, you're looking at a final plat occurring at the three thousand block of Sherry Whitlock Drive. Uh, the proposal is to split the existing track, uh, in the Alrod subdivision, creating three new lots. Um, the reason you're seeing this application is because there does not have a corresponding preliminary plat. Uh, and there is no infrastructure being proposed. Uh, here you see the, uh, proposed revisions of the subdivision. Uh, the lot here, uh, is, uh, being split along, uh, the line essentially from here up and then going over by this existing lot here, which creates, uh, two new lots on the, here and here. Uh, so there's three total lots included in this, uh, proposal. And they will have access to either Sherry Whitlock or Progress Avenue. Uh, here you see this is a site looking to the north. The lots, um, are north and south of the existing dental office. Uh, and then, uh, the final lot, as you can see in the picture, is in that heavily wooded area where it shows project site that's north of the high school's agricultural studies building. Uh, staff is recommending approval with the standard condition filing within forty five days. And we stand by for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Does anyone on behalf of the applicant wish to address the commission? Please raise your hand in Zoom or dial star nine. There being none, is anyone from the public wish to address the commission in regards to this proposal? Please raise your hand in the Zoom app or dial star nine on your phone. Seeming to be none, is there any questions or comments from the commissioners in regards to this proposal? Seeming none, is there a motion in regards to this proposal? Motion to approve FB twenty dash zero three. Motion to approve FB twenty dash zero three. Do I have a motion for approval? Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Mr. Phillips.
McKinney?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Calvin?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Sally? Was that a yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes, goes to the Board of Directors on June 2nd of 2020. Next item on the agenda will be significant development permit SD two zero dash zero two, one thousand block of South Washington. Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission again. So we're transitioning now to a significant development permit. This is occurring at the one thousand block of South Washington Street. And as a point of reference, this is just south of the Priscilla Court project that you reviewed earlier this afternoon. The proposal is to construct two office warehouse buildings, a consumer self-storage facility, and finally, an auto services shop. Here you see the proposed site plan. Now, the long-term plan is to split this property into two lots. As you see here, we have reviewed the project so it can work with the proposed lot split in addition to occurring just on one lot. The primary entrance to the auto services building will be off of Kimwood. No connection is planned from this facility to the self-storage units to the south. The second entrance for lot two is located here beside. That's coming from South Washington Street. You will note that the axis here has a sharp curvature to it. This is so it can meet code and align with an existing drive that's located across the street. After accessing the first two buildings, customers will be able to continue on the drive to access the self-storage complex. The applicant is not developing the rear or the east side of the lot because they did not want to impair drainage. As you know from the previous testimony and photos from today, water does flow through this area along the detention basin or up to the regional detention basin. This is the proposed landscape plan. As you can see, ample trees are proposed, which will assist in slowing stormwater runoff. Landscaping is provided as a buffer to the house on the corner as well, the house located right there. This is a photo indicating generally what the proposed structures will look like. They are best described as a primary metal facade with stone or stucco treatments at the base by the main entrance, wall-mounted lining for parking areas. Finally, you're looking at the site to the north. The area is best classified as auto-oriented with multiple auto sales and services in the neighborhood. Staff is recommending approval with two conditions. The first is that the applicant must comply with the required parking lot lighting standards that's shown on the building permit plan sets. The second is that either the lot split be submitted or a separate easement plat be submitted, that be required prior to building permit issuance. With that, staff, for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Anyone on behalf of the applicant wish to address the commission? Please raise your hand in Zoom app or dial star nine on your phone. Mr. Homeyer.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that we have no issues with the two recommended conditions and be glad to answer any question.
Thank you. Anyone from the public wish to address the commission in regards to this proposal? Please raise your hand on the Zoom app or dial star nine on your phone. None, we'll put it into the public comment period. Anyone from the commission have questions or comments regarding this proposal? Seeming to be none, does anyone have a motion in regards to this proposal?
I move to approve SD twenty dash oh two, subject to the following conditions. The applicant must comply with the parking lot lightings, city standards prior to building permits issuance, and a lot split permit or a separate easement plat shall be required prior to building permission.
Thank you, have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Mr. Phillips, when you're ready.
Smith?
Yes.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Calvin?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Motion passes and goes to the Board of Directors on June 2nd, 2020. Next item on the agenda is rezoning development permit, RZ twenty dash zero two, rezoned from A1 to C2, forty-two hundred to forty-three hundred block of Highway four twelve east. Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission, for your final review this afternoon. You're considering a rezoning request at forty-two ninety, Highway four twelve east. This request is to rezone our four point one five acres from A1 to C2. In addition to this, the same applicant is requesting to adjust the lot lines, creating a new subdivision in the process. The rezoning request requires the commission's recommendation. However, the lot line adjustment is a staff-level approval. I will present on both applications. This is the proposed site plan. The rezoning to C2 is occurring on the southern part of Lot One and Lot Two and all of Lot Two. The lot line adjustment transfers one point five five acres from Lot Two to Lot One, effectively enlarging the rear of the lot housing TJ's Pizza. Here you see the future land use map designation for the whole area as commercial. That's what's outlined in the red, if you can make that out. And that is consistent with the proposed C2 zone. And here is this an aerial view to give you the idea of what's being rezoned. And then finally, the site view looking to the north. Staff will approve the lot line adjustment if the rezoning is adopted by the board. Staff has no conditions, and we recommend approval, and we stand by for any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Does anyone on behalf of the applicant wish to speak to the commission? Please raise your hand in the Zoom app or dial star nine on your phone. Seeming to be none, we'll call into the public comment period. Anyone from the commission have? Oh, I'm sorry. Does anyone from the public wish to comment on this project to the commission? Please raise your hand on the Zoom app or dial star nine on your phone. If you're seeming to be none, now it's an end to the public comment period. Does anyone from the commission have questions or comments regarding this proposal? Seeming to be none. Do we have a motion on this proposal from the commission? I would make a motion to approve RZ twenty dash zero two. I have a motion. Do we have a second? And a second. Mr. Phillips, when you're ready.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Calvin?
Yes.
Song?
Yes.
Montgomery? Or, excuse me, Sally?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Motion approved, goes to the Board of Directors, June 2nd, 2020. Next item on the agenda is staff approved permit, Mr. Rhodes.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, before we move on, I wanted to get back with you on the procedural question that you raised.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And yeah, and I hate having to wing it when these things come up out of the blue, but it does turn out that my initial thinking on that was correct. And according to Robert's Rules, Chapter ten, and I'm specifically looking at the eleventh edition, pages three thirty-six and three thirty-seven, that the rules restricting renewal of motions do not apply to motions that die for lack of a second. So they can be brought back up in the same meeting. So that, that is an item. It is still ripe for consideration, you know, by the commission if you choose to do that.
Even though we moved on through the agenda?
Yes, I mean, it can still, it could still be brought up in the same meeting.
Prior to the staff permits, staff approved permits, I will ask the commission if anyone wishes to open discussion again on the rezone
Rezone.
And therefore
And therefore
the preliminary plat
Preliminary plat.
at nine hundred South Washington.
I would like to open rezon development permit to RZ twenty dash oh three.
I have a motion to amend the agenda to go back to this topic. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Mr. Williams, do we have to vote on that, or is that sufficient?
Well, I mean, it's already, it's already an agenda item, so I don't, I don't believe it requires a vote. I mean, I think it's, I mean, it's subject to discussion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to discuss this again. Let's start with the R-zone, or sorry, the rezone. Do we have any comments from the commissioners regarding the rezone? Or do we have a motion in regards to the rezone for RZ twenty dash zero three, nine hundred block of South Washington?
Mr. Commissioner, I move that we dismiss or decline rezoning of twenty dash zero three.
I have a motion to decline.
A second.
Motion and a second. Mr. Phillips.
Calvin? Calvin?
I'm going to have to vote yes to decline simply because the land use map that is in place, and I'm not quite comfortable with the big picture of the development as proposed at this time.
Song?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Okay, the vote was to decline the rezone permit. That will go to the Board of Directors with that same recommendation on June 2nd, 2020. Do we have a motion in regards to the preliminary plat, PP twenty dash zero two, for the Board of Directors?
Mr. Commissioner, do we, do we need to decline it since it was declined in the rezoning?
Previous discussion that was held in pre-agenda meetings, my understanding was even if it did get declined, it still needed to, as a matter of procedure. I mean, obviously, if you voted one way for the one, you'll vote same for the next or whatever. But my understanding was we still needed to bring both topics regardless.
Okay. Mr. Commissioner, I I vote we, I move to deny the preliminary plat development permit for PP twenty dash zero two at this time.
I have a motion to deny PP twenty dash zero two. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second, motion and a second. Mr. Phillips.
Song?
Yes.
Sally?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Driscoll?
Yes.
Calvin?
I will have to vote yes to decline it due to my feelings about the volume of lots in comparison to the drainage. The recommendation to deny this preliminary plat has passed, and will go to the Board of Directors on June 2nd, 2020. Mr. Rhodes, staff approved permits.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you have already been briefed on the lot line adjustment for Mr. McReynolds. We did receive a second application for a lot line adjustment. This is at the three hundred block of North Country Club Road. This already went to the board to accept easements last month. This is not click forward for some reason. Yeah. Let's try that. Oh, there we go. Thank you. Doesn't like when you have your pants elected, apparently. So here is the site plan. This consolidates the lots here. This is part of an old subdivision called the LM Proctors Edition, creating Lot seven A and seventeen A of said addition. In addition, also shifts the property line south by approximately two feet to clear the existing residence. As I stated, this already went to the board for easements. We stand by for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Seem to have any questions or comments regarding the staff approved permits? Being none, before I ask for comments for anybody, I'd like to say thanks for enduring through this type of meeting, the length and the volume. the length and the volume that we inherited for not meeting for a month. And if that is there any other comments from commissioners prior to adjournment? Being none. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Gentlemen, meeting is adjourned. Have a good night and hope to see you in person.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.